Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and here the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
KDKA. Oh, okay.
I don't feel good.
Okay.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
We have 14 members present.
Proclaimations and slash certificates, 12903-24.
A proclamation recognizing KDKA TV's 75th anniversary and their commitment to excellence in news, local programming, and community service sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary and all other members of council.
Hey, guys, I want to show you something here, too.
Did you read the proclamation?
Quite a lengthy proclamation, huh?
It's quite a script. Let me give a little speech first, then you do the proclamation.
You want to do it that way? Yeah. Okay. Let me. Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of presenting tonight to KDKA and our representatives for their 75th anniversary. And Nick asks if he wants to speak a little bit before I read the proclamation. We have Mr. Shumway here, as you can, I'm sure you recognize, and the KDKA general manager, Chris Katuda.
Yep.
And we have special projects, Corey Martin.
Come up here, Corey.
Corey, come on up.
Don't hide. Come here.
Of course, we have John Shumway, and Director of Streaming and Digital is John Fisher.
And he's hard at work back at the station.
He's hard, oh, he's, okay, he's back at work. Okay. So, Nick, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, thanks. I was excited to hear about the 75th anniversary for KDK, and I'm old enough to watch it most of my life, in fact, all of my life. I'm 70 years old.
Still watching, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's the point.
Sure.
This is my point. When I was old enough to remember, we had a little Motorola television set. It was black and white, and it was Bill Burns. He was the newscaster that time. Well, we had a TV set that only had rabbit ears on it, so we couldn't get Channel 4. It wouldn't come in. So, we were in the habit of watching Channel 2 the whole time, my entire life. So, even once we got more advanced with the same TV, we had an antenna that had that little directional thing. You turn the knob, go, duh-duh-duh-duh. Still couldn't get Channel 4, wouldn't come in. Channel 11 was a secondary, of course, that came in better, but out of habit, watching KDK news my entire life, it never changed. So, every night at 6:00 or 11:00, my wife automatically says, "Turn the channel to Channel 2, the news is on." And that's the way it's been my whole life. So, I'm delighted to actually say that I'm part of this council today and honoring you for 75 years. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now, you have to admit, that wasn't too bad for Nick, was it? I was a little nervous there for a few minutes.
You never know what's going to come out.
Yeah, never know. You never know. You never know. Okay, we have a lengthy proclamation here, so I'm going to get started, folks, please. Whereas born of a belief in local broadcasting and a dream of community service, KDKA TV is a pioneer in broadcasting that always held close to its founding mission and made sure to provide constant news to the people of Allegheny County and surrounding region. And whereas on Tuesday, January 11, 1949, Pittsburgh's first television station was launched, WDTV-TV, part of Dumont Television Network, and later became known as KDKA. The station's first broadcast was a one-hour live program broadcast from Syria Mosque in Oakland. That broadcast was the final piece of the puzzle connecting television stations in the eastern and midwest United States by coaxial cable, therefore making the broadcast the birth of a network television, and Pittsburgh the birthplace of network television. And whereas the following year, WDTV opened its first studio space in the Chamber of Commerce Building at the corner of 7th Avenue and Smithfield Street. The first show produced there was The Wilkins Amateur Hour. Oh, L. Noble. Oh, my goodness. Whereas a few years later, WDTV realized the need for 24-hour programming, and in March 1952, it became the first television station in the country to broadcast a 24-hour program. And whereas in 1994, the station moved to One Gateway Center, and later that year, Dumont Television, which owned WDTV, sold it to Westinghouse, which then changed the station's call letters to align it with the pioneering radio powerhouse, KDKA AM, at 12:01 PM on January 31, 1955. WDTV officially changed to KDKA TV. And whereas over the years, KDK has had an extensive and impressive list of renowned TV anchors. Some of KDK's early anchors included Dave Murray, Al McDowell, Paul Long, and Don Riggs. From 1953 to 1989, Bill Burns was the face of KDK. In the '60s, KDK became one of the first stations to hire African-American reporters to give more prominent roles to female journalists, including journalist Marie Torry. Other notable longtime KDK newscasters have included Bob Guzman, Patty Burns, Ray Tannehill, Bill Curry, Wayne Van Dyne, Al Julius, Patricia King Brown, Lynn Hayes Freeman, Harold Hayes, Mary Rob Jackson, Ralph Leonardi, Bob Pompiani, John Burnett, Stacy Smith, Paul Martino, Brenda Waters, John Shumway, Ken Rice, and Christine Sorensen, just to name a few. Thank God we just named a few. All good people, too. Whereas KDK has been a staple in Allegheny County broadcasting, the station's news coverage is a true testament to that. KDK's anchors have been sent around the world on assignment, visiting places like Russia, Vietnam, Israel, Kuwait, Saudi Arabia, and the Vatican. The station has been present for three of the Pirates' five World Series championships, all five of the Penguins Stanley Cup championships, and all six of the Steelers Super Bowl championships. And whereas not only is KDK committed to providing continuous news, their longest-running program is the annual holiday telethon, which benefits the Free Care Fund at UPMC Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. That telethon has been held annually since 1954. And whereas while the faces that bring you the news on KDK have changed over the years, KDK continues to remain committed to fair and honest reporting, covering the issues that are important to the people of Allegheny County, and serving the community that has welcomed them into their homes for the past 75 years. And in the words of the beloved Bill Burns, "Good night, good luck, and good news tomorrow." I didn't do that too bad.
You did very well.
Now, therefore, be resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmember John Paul Mary, along with Sam DiMarco, Bethany Hallam, Jack Birkowski, Suzanne Filiagi, Anita Pritzio, Patrick Katina, Dan Grisbeck, Nick Fatoulas, Michelle Nakareti-Chapkus, Macy, DeWitt Walton, Paul Klein, and David Bonner, I'm going to get that right yet, David, do hereby celebrate KDK TV and its dedicated team of anchors, reporters, producers, writers, and directors, past and present, in celebrating 75 years of quality program, news, and community service, and a witness thereof. I have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of January 2024. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, look, he's camera shy.
Oh, no, I'm not that.
What a history at KDK. And I will tell you, the one I walked through the door 35 years ago, and Bill Burns was sitting at a desk right next door, the history overwhelms you. And you know what? It still happens every single day when I walk into Gateway Center. We understand the commitment that KDK means to the community, the things that we do every day to try and inform the public of what's going on. We understand the responsibility that we have. That sense of history is a legacy that we uphold every single day, and I am so proud to be a part of KDK.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't really need to. I don't do anything but sit at the desk and sign this contract. I mean, and hers, too. Here's what I'll tell everybody that's actually from Pittsburgh, and I'm from the much-loved Philadelphia area, but I've lived here now for 20, yeah, you're grinning. I've lived here for 25 years and spent the last 22 years at KDK, and I couldn't be prouder to work at any other television station and be part of any other city, raised three kids here. This television station means a lot to me, it means a lot to you, and we're going to do everything in our power to continue to bring KDK into the future, from the legacy status that it is and was, into the future to provide the information, the entertainment, and to make sure that everybody is safe in Pittsburgh. So, thank you for this, and we'll continue to work hard every day. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Take the proclamation, and we'll go up the picture.
Come on over here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're half-priced.
We're taking up your whole meeting?
Yeah.
on her birthday today. So, happy birthday, Jenny.
Happy birthday!
The remaining proclamations will be read into the record.
Bill number 12904-24, proclamation congratulating Gerald and Carol Zeeman on the occasion of their 60th wedding anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary. 12905-24, proclamation welcoming Shenyon Performing Arts to Allegheny County and Pittsburgh's Benedum Center for the Performing Arts on January 27 through 28, 2024, sponsored by Councilmember Macy. 12906-24, proclamation recognizing and congratulating Hunter Fitzpatrick, Mayor, on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck. And 12907-24, proclamation recognizing and congratulating Edward McKenzie Vicente Khan on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Public comment on agenda items.
We have Juan Rachel Nunes.
She's not here.
Is not here.
Okay, approval of minutes, 12913-24.
A motion to approve the minutes of the December 19, 2023 regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12914-24.
A motion to approve the minutes of the January 2, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus, I believe you would like to make a motion to amend this evening's agenda?
Mr. President, yes, I would like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda, to add one nomination to the presentation of appointments agenda. It is my understanding that if the agenda is amended, that the nominee will be referred to the Appointment Review Committee. The nomination is Rosalynn Guy McCorkle for county solicitor, and I would ask for a second, please.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to have the clerk read all the nominations together, and then they're all referred to the Committee on Appointment Review.
12902-24, approving the appointment of Barbara Griffin to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 12908-24, approving the appointment of Mohammed Ali Nasir to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 12909-24, approving the appointment of Rob Perkins to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 12910-24, approving the reappointment of Mark Forster to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for a term effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 12911-24, approving the reappointment of Mandy Steele to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for a term effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 12912-24, approving the appointment of Kyle Chintala-Pali to the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County for a term effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. And of course, last up would be Ms. Guy McCorkle for appointment as the county solicitor. That one does not have a bill number yet.
Any unfinished business?
No.
No unfinished, okay. Liaison reports, any liaison reports this evening? Councilwoman Nakareti-Chapkus.
Thank you, President Katina. I just wanted to provide one liaison report related to the Friends of Voice Park Committee that had met in 2023. It was established last year, as many of you know. And just to give you a highlight of some of the activities, last year, the committee focused on health and safety within the park and added some new structures in working with the County Parks Department. They had a photo contest that was done, and they had three categories, three winners, professional photographer, the age 17 and under category, as well as the age 18 and over category. And they established a social media presence and have a Facebook page, and that Facebook page now has active followers, and a lot of people are utilizing that page for asking questions about the park and getting their answers, as well as encouraging them to attend all of the upcoming meetings. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Councilwoman Filiagi?
Thank you, President Katina. And my liaison report also includes Councilwoman Michelle Nakareti-Chapkus. This weekend, we had the honor of being asked to speak at Chatham University's Pennsylvania Center for Women in Politics, and we both, we weren't in the same forum, but we both had an opportunity to speak, and this is a program that the attendees are young women who have a desire to either run for office themselves or at least work in that venue. So, I think it was a very positive experience for both of us, and I think for the attendees. And we did get comments like that some of the attendees were inspired by the kindness, the bipartisanship that we displayed, all of us, when we were at the conference. So, I just wanted to say that we had a good time, and this was a positive report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, no one else. We'll move on. New business ordinances, resolutions. 12915-24.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending Article 209 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled Office of Property Assessments, Section 5-209.05 entitled Chief Assessment Officer Duties and Responsibilities in order to establish a mechanism for ensuring continuity in the chief assessment officer position, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
That will go to the Committee on Assessment Practices. 12916-24.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 475 entitled Taxation by the Creation of a New Article 12 entitled Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program in order to establish a uniform program of Allegheny County real property tax incentives for certain volunteer service providers, sponsored by Councilmembers Katina and Grisbeck.
That will go to the Committee on Budget and Finance. 12917-24.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending and supplementing the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 207 entitled New Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review, Section 5-207.03 entitled Qualifications of Board Members' Appointment Terms, Organization of Appeals Board, and Section 5-207.04 entitled Compliance with County Procedures in order to establish uniform training requirements for members of the board and any hearing officers retained by the board, sponsored by Councilmembers Filiagi, Katina, and Macy.
That will go also to Assessment Practices. 12918-24.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending and supplementing the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 207 entitled New Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review, Section 5-207.06 entitled Rules and Regulations for Appeals in order to establish a uniform expeditious process for rendering decisions regarding real property assessment appeals, sponsored by Councilmembers Filiagi, Katina, and Macy.
That will also go to Assessment Practices. New businesses motions, 12919-24.
A motion to the Council of Allegheny County amending the rules of council, Article 7 entitled Solicitor Contract Term in order to provide for periodic requests and review of proposals for the position of county council solicitor, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
That will go to the Executive Committee. 12920-24.
Motion to the Council of Allegheny County approving a cost-of-living adjustment for council staff members, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Councilmember Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Executive Committee met on January 17 and affirmatively recommended a 4% cost-of-living increase for all of council staff per January 1 through December 31, 2024, and I would like to make that a motion and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski. Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
I am going to cast this vote, but I first must express my concerns about the lack of diversity on the county council staff.
Again, Mr. Walton, this is time for the vote. I called for discussion.
You're not going to shut me down.
I called for discussion. Please respect the rules of council.
Again, you're not going to shut me down.
Please respect the rules of council.
And I'm going to express those concerns today, tomorrow, forever.
Obviously, you'd have no concern for the rules of council, then, Mr. Walton, because I asked for discussion and you refut, you didn't comment. This is now the vote. During the vote...
I'm going to cast my vote with those concerns that I expressed, and my vote will be yes.
Thank you.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, no 0, with two members not present. Motion passes.
12921-24.
Motion to the Council of Allegheny County approving updated leave policies for council staff members, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Councilmember Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Executive Committee met on January 17 and affirmatively recommended an update to the council staff leave policy as it relates to annual sick and parental leaves, and I would like to make that motion and ask for a second, please.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Walton, would you like to have any say at this point?
Well, I'm glad that you finally recognized me, Mr. President, in that you choose not to do so on such a regular basis, but I don't have any comments regarding that.
Well, I only recognize you when you don't follow the council rules, obviously, so...
You would follow some rules, Karen.
Well, I'm trying to follow the council rules, but obviously, maybe you ought to review the council member handbook, and maybe that would help you out a little bit.
I thought I had earlier, Mr. President.
Well, when a vote is called, that's when it's time to vote, either a yes or a no.
We're not going to get into a personal tat attack tonight at an appropriate time. We'll deal with that, Mr. President.
Well, I would appreciate it if you'd follow the rules of council. It's not a simple, I'm not going to waste any more time with you, so we're going to move on. So, at this point in time, roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski. Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yeah.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, no 0. Bill passes.
12922-24.
A motion to the Council of Allegheny County authorizing payment of invoices for extraordinary professional services rendered as a result of litigation involving Allegheny County Council as a party, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
Thank you. The minimum wage, for the minimum wage bill, just the reflection of it's $8,332.50, and for the Schuman bill, it's $4,600.50, for the total of $12,933. Councilman Paul Mary, would you like to make that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have concerns about those expenditures. Over the objections that I raised, we chose to pursue that litigation, and notwithstanding anything else, particularly on the minimum wage issue, we chose not to appeal that decision when it was ruled not in our favor, and we chose not to appeal that. And so, I believe that that is poor judgment on council to allow that appeal not to be pursued if we believe that we had the power to do it in the first place.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to correct him, if I may. There is no we. There were certain people of council, not all of us. Make sure we clarify that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hallam?
Yeah, so first of all, I never get to do this, so I actually want to agree with Councilman Walton on something. I also feel the same way that I wish we would have appealed, so I just want to put that on the record. But then I also want to remind folks that when the county executive sues us, the executive branch actually has to reimburse us for the expenses incurred, so that amount, what is that, the $8,332.50? We will actually pursue reimbursement from the administrative branch for those expenses for our legal fees.
And for the record, Solicitor Frank, when we sent the email out to all of council regarding the appeal, did you hear from any member at that point in time?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. An email was sent to everyone about the appeal, and to see if we wanted to appeal at that point in time, basically, everyone was supposed to contact Solicitor Frank if they had questions or concerns, and at that point in time, no one raised any objections.
With all due respect, my interpretation of the email did not, was that the email did not say, express if you had some concerns regarding that decision, to voice that concern to the solicitor. It was, my interpretation of the email is that we choose not to pursue this appeal.
Okay. And it was also asked if you had any concerns or questions to contact the solicitor. Is that correct, Mr. Frank?
That's right.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to unfortunately have to agree with Councilman Walton again. I also did not interpret the email to be asking me if I objected to the decision not to appeal. It felt more as an informational message, letting us know that we were not appealing. But that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay, no, go ahead. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski. Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yeah.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 12, no one. The bill passes.
12923-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County authorizing retention of the services of the law firm of Frank Gale Bales &amp; Pogras, PC to provide legal advice, representation, and consultation to county councils sponsored by council member Paul Mary.
Council member Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Executive Committee met on January 17th and affirmatively recommended that council renew the contract of council solicitor Frederick Frank and the firm of Frank Gales, Bale, and Pogras for two years, and I would like to make that motion and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
In that open session where, in that discussion of retention of our solicitor, I voiced concerns on several fronts, particularly on the minimum wage issue. I said, and I repeat, either the solicitor gave us bad information, or he gave us good information and we chose to ignore it. Predicated upon my belief, because of us filing litigation, I'm assuming that he gave us bad information, and as a result, I voiced then, and I voiced tonight, that my vote will be no to retain him.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to speak in support of this motion. For those of you who have been on council for a while, I think that the new representation that Mr. Frank has provided has been a breath of fresh air. I felt like we've been getting a lot of communication. I feel that every step of the process has been, I felt represented, and so I'm going to be voting in favor of continuing our services with him, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Anyone else this evening? Councilman DiMarco.
Mr. President, when we talked about this in the open session, I expressed the concern in that we had received advice that we took and followed based upon that advice, and then it turns out that we decide we're not gonna take and pursue it. And I guess the concern I have is, we have someone providing us advice, or legal advice or opinion, in Mr. Frank, but then he also handles the litigation for us. So, I guess I was concerned that, are we getting the actual best advice, or are we getting advice that'll lead to litigation, which results in more revenue and more business to the firm? I'm gonna assume that Mr. Frank gave us his best advice. I'm gonna support this contract, but I just wanted to express, you know, those are concerns that we just need to figure out, how do we address moving forward, so that there's no question that we're pursuing litigation for the sake of litigation, and it's really based upon standing up for council's rights and privileges, you know, under the Charter of Administration Code. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? On the contract, I would just like to say that I've been dealing with solicitors for a long time, from when I was with Carnegie, and a wise solicitor told me in Carnegie that there is no such thing as a slam dunk when it comes to a law case, even though you think you're going to win 100% of the time, and the law should be supporting you 100% of the time. Unfortunately, it's like a football game. On any given Sunday, you just don't know which way the law's gonna end up, unfortunately. You can take all the great advice in the world and run with it, but the judge might rule against you, and unfortunately, that happens, and we deal with it and move on. But in this case, for minimum wage, we are gonna seek reimbursement from the executive since he's the one that brought the suit. So, will be made hold for the $8,300 at this point in time. So, we'll do a roll call vote, and I'll, Jared, please.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski. Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiachi.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fatulis.
You want to say it twice? Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 12, no one. The bill passes.
12924-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County authorizing continuation of the services of Dreamscape Video Productions to provide council meeting video streaming and recording and other videography services to county council through January 31st, 2026 sponsored by council member Paul Mary.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Executive Committee met on January 17th and affirmatively recommended that council renew the contract of PJ Roof's Dreamscape Productions for two years, and I would like to make that motion and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski. Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco. Ms. Filiachi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yeah.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, no zero. The bill passes.
12925-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County urging the chief executive and Department of Human Services in cooperation with the City of Pittsburgh and the nonprofit Unhoused Persons Medical Business and Other Communities to explore how aspects of the model for delivery of services to unhoused persons in Houston, Texas might successfully, might be successfully carried over to Allegheny County sponsored by council member Katina.
That will go to the Committee on Housing and Homelessness. 12926-24.
Motion of the Council of Allegheny County opposing the sale of U.S. Steel to Nippon sponsored by council members Walton, Pritzio, Fatulis, and Paul Mary.
Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. I offered up this sense of council resolution for several reasons. A number of my residents, a number of communities that I represent, border, U.S. Steel facilities, but more importantly, I think it's important that we do everything possible to avoid a repeat of what occurred in 1980 with the collapse of the American steel industry. Nippon Steel, well, let me back up a step. U.S. Steel is going to be sold irrespective of the purchaser, but it is important to the residents of Allegheny County in general, and to the workers in those facilities even more so, that our responsible purchaser acquires the facility. If someone looks at the efforts at the transaction, the sale will not be to Nippon Steel. It would be to Nippon Holding Company. And if you look at that company, that holding company, it has no assets. There is no obligation that they live up to the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreements. There is no obligation for them to live up to the terms of the pension agreements, and it puts those workers at risk. And it is clear that, from our perspective, from my perspective, that there is going to be a shift in production from U.S. Steel's integrated facilities to their Big River operation in OCOO, Arkansas. That shift in production is not gonna come from Gary Works, it's gonna come from the mine valley. Other proposed purchasers are committed to putting those dollars, that $1.3 billion investment that U.S. Steel proposed several years ago, into the mine valley. And as a result, I don't want to put workers in Allegheny County at risk. And as a result, I'm urging my members of council to oppose that sale.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Councilman DiMarco.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to my colleague, Councilman Walton, I took and did a little bit of research on this, and I had mail put in each of your mailboxes today.
I read it, sir.
It was a Wall Street Journal article from the top executives in Nippon. It was a Tribune Review article from analysts at CMU who talked about the positive benefits and impact of this deal. And it was also a consumer group who talked about the benefits of this deal, both for the consumers as well as for the workers. Now, to explain to folks, or just clarify exactly what Nippon is doing, you know, Cleveland Cliffs offered $7.3 billion for U.S. Steel in an unsolicited bid. Nippon, a publicly traded company that is making a nearly $15 billion investment, $15 billion, folks, $14.9 billion they're gonna inject into our economy and into U.S. Steel. Nippon currently employs 4,000 Americans today, and has a strong track record with its labor unions and the communities in which it operates. Their advanced production technology and research and development will add significant value to U.S. Steel. Nippon, which runs many of the largest blast furnaces in the world, intends to bring fresh investment and innovation to U.S. Steel's blast furnace facilities, including technology to increase efficiency and reduce CO2 emissions. Nippon is also committed, and this is extremely important, is committed to maintaining the United States Steel name, its branding, and the Pittsburgh headquarters with its 1,000 employees. You know, if Cleveland Cliffs or someone else were to buy this, they could just move the headquarters, which Cleveland Cliffs went, to Cleveland, and all the headquarters, the 1,000 headquarters employees, all of which make good wages here in Allegheny County, could be out of a job. Now, Nippon will also maintain U.S. Steel's manufacturing facilities, ensure its products are mined, melted, and made in America. And they have also agreed to honor all collective bargaining agreements with the unions, whose job security will be greater following this transaction, because the company will be better off financially due to Nippon's larger size and far better capital positions. Now, notably, none of the other proposals to acquire U.S. Steel offer the same commitments to the U.S. Steel brand, its Pittsburgh headquarters, and capital investment in its facilities. But fellow council members, this motion has no legal impact, but it could have a real world, world negative impact. I'm concerned it sends the wrong message about investing in Allegheny County. This is an unusual way to welcome a company who is choosing to invest billions of dollars to acquire U.S. Steel and join our community, $14.9 billion, to be exact. By passing this motion, what are we saying to foreign companies interested in investing in Allegheny County? That they and their dollars that would invest in our local communities are not welcome? And what does it say to out-of-state companies who want to bring jobs here? How will those potential investors view this motion, which communicates that county council is opposed to foreign investment in Allegheny County? The good news for Allegheny County is this offer by Nippon Steel keeps a world-known corporate headquarters and 1,000 good-paying jobs here. And I think it's also important to understand, and Councilman Walton brought this up, is that there is no Plan B, okay? This proposed sale is not a one or the either. U.S. Steel entertained multiple offers for this company, and many of them are from companies that have headquarters elsewhere in the United States. If this deal were to disappear, then U.S. Steel could disappear entirely from Pittsburgh and our region. So, for these reasons, why I think it's important, if we try to advertise that Allegheny County is open and welcoming toward business and investment to this region, I will have to be a no on this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
If I may...
Thank you. Go ahead.
If I may, I welcome this, you know, Sam and I have had this conversation, some of this conversations earlier this week and late last week, and I welcome this open forum to discuss this issue, because it truly, it truly impacts all of us, either directly or indirectly. And so, there is no doubt, and Sam himself, and respectfully, Sam told me in our conversation last week, that he's a capitalist. We embrace capitalism. I embrace capitalism. However, that $14.1 billion that Nippon Holding Company is offering in cash, and it's important, it is important to note the difference between Nippon Steel and Nippon Holding Company. While Sam put in our boxes, materials from those sources that he used, I'm using sources like Alliance for American Manufacturing from the legal department of United Steelworkers, an organization that I've worked for, for 28 years, that I trust completely. And so, I truly respect the fact that U.S. Steel is going to be sold, no doubt. The question is whether or not the purchaser is a responsible purchaser, committed to operation in this country, in this community, and not continue to put the economy of Allegheny County at further risk.
Anyone else this evening? Councilman DiMarco?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, you know, I'd like to quote from the Tribune Review article where industry analyst John Tumazos, T-U-M-A-Z-O-S, was quoted, he's the son of an Edgar Thompson Works steelworker, Carnegie Mellon University alumnus, who has tracked trends in the metal industries for 44 years. Now, he's worked for various outfits before founding Very Independent Research in 2007, and he said that these politician and union guys are getting this wrong. He believes, he and others who follow the steel industry, said they consider it likely that Nippon Steel will resurrect U.S. Steel's planned $1.2 million mine valley modernization, which the company abandoned in May 2021, just two years after announcing it. And together with this, and the increase in capitalization that they're gonna put into this company, they're talking about a belief that there could be billion-dollar annual projects with this company, you know, for the next 10 years. In every deal, there are gonna be people that are gonna look at it in their interests, you know, there'll be people that are for it, there'll be people that are opposed, but, you know, and Councilman Walton talked about some of the folks in the one article that I provided you, if you look, the automobile manufacturers here in this country, they oppose the Cleveland Cliffs deal, because it takes and gives Cleveland Cliffs 100% control over the iron ore, and they've talked about how new car prices have increased by 30% in the last three years, used car prices have increased by 38% in the last three years, and that they believe a monopoly on those type of metals may only lead to further increases. So, they've sent letters to the federal government opposed to the Cleveland Cliffs deal. So, you know, and I'm not here to disparage Cleveland Cliffs, or, you know, the deal that United Steelworkers or anything like that, you know, has worked out with them. I mean, I strongly support our steelworkers in the mine valley, but I also support the workers who work at the headquarters, you know, who could lose their jobs if it goes to one of these. I'm just concerned about what's the best thing we can do for the people here in Allegheny County, and I believe selling it to a well-capitalized firm that has the cash to make the investments in it to try to clean the air, that so many of our fellow council members seem concerned with, as well as send a signal to companies across this globe that there's opportunity here in Allegheny County, and we want them to come here. You know, a lot of folks, we talked about minimum wage legislation, the quickest way to raise wages is to compete for workers. It's supply and demand, and the more people we have coming here that are looking for workers, the faster you will see workers' wages rise. So, for this reason, I, again, I have to oppose this motion and would urge that we say no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Fatulis?
Yeah, well, thank you. After listening to Mr. Walton and Mr. DiMarco, it brought a lot of new light to this motion. I think we maybe might want to hear from maybe U.S. Steel themselves before we make some sort of a motion. We may be sending the wrong message at this time. I haven't heard from any labor unions. I haven't heard from anybody, quite frankly, except I heard from you, and then I heard from him.
I'm the union guy on council.
Well, and that's another problem. You could be a conflict event working for U.S. Steel. I don't know if that's a conflict or not. I don't know. But right now, I'd like to withdraw my name as a co-sponsor, because I really don't know if we're sending the right message to this company and saying, business isn't welcome here in Allegheny County. You know, I'm just a little concerned about it, and I would like to make a motion, quite frankly, to hold this and have further discussion before we make that decision.
Yeah, we already have a second, yeah. We have the motion and the second.
Sorry. But at this time, I'm gonna have to vote no, if that's the case, unless you want to hold it. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Councilman Filiachi?
Thank you very much, President Katina. And as usual, Councilman DiMarco has artfully articulated the argument in favor of the sale, and as usual, Councilmember Walton has articulated your points as well in favor of our brothers and sisters that are steelworkers. My grandfather was a steelworker, and as an assistant district attorney, we were steelworkers as well. So, I'm not there now, but I've been there, and I know my family has. And I would gladly support a motion recognizing them and in reminding the Nippon Steel that upon this sale, we'll be watching, we will definitely be watching. But this particular sale, I think, as Sam has suggested, is a welcome mat for business. And I also think that's the mission of the county executive, the new county executive. She's sat in front of us, or stood in front of us, and told us that she is open for business and is going to actively seek new businesses to come into this region to do exactly what Sam indicated, is a wage increase trigger, and that is more businesses. is a wage increase trigger, and that is more businesses. So, and I think that's what this particular sale does allow, $14 billion and the capital to do what they say they're going to do. They're not stretching the dollar. They're not nickel-and-diming this. This is actual money that they have to put towards the jobs in our region. And the argument about Cleveland Cliffs or against Nippon Steel because we can't hold them accountable, we can't make Cleveland Cliffs keep the jobs here either. And the likelihood of them leaving and taking the workers and executives with them because it's so close, why would they have two corporate centers so close to each other? That doesn't make sense. So for those reasons, I would, I'm going, I cannot support the motion, but I do support the workers and the work that went into this motion. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Councilwoman Nakaradi-Chapkus.
So Edgar Thompson Works is in my district, and I have not heard from individuals in the community where that particular facility is located. I do agree, and I have a concern about keeping the economy strong and keeping workers there and employed. I also know that on January 6th of this year, U.S. Steel was fined $2.2 billion for air quality violations. In July of '23, they were fined $300,000 for air quality violations. In March of '23, they were fined $307,800 for air quality violations. And this Wall Street Journal article that was shared with us does indicate that the potential purchaser would introduce technology to increase efficiency and reduce carbon emissions. For that, I am hopeful that there might be an opportunity to invest in the infrastructure, in the plant, in the facility, to have it operate according to best technology available. However, I do feel that there are still some questions on the table that we would want to seek from our communities. And so for that, I'm abstaining, because I feel like I need more information this evening.
Councilman Thomasina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I do believe what Councilman Fatoulis said, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered from our unions and our labor and from my brothers and sisters. So for that, I will be a no on this sale right now.
Thank you. At this point in time, I don't believe there was a second for the motion, was there?
There was not.
Then you can do your thing. You've had your motion. Let's have it.
Well, actually, I would like to make a motion to actually hold this.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Notification of contracts, 12927-24.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for December 2022.
Sorry, Mr. President. I apologize. Can we do a roll call vote on that motion?
To hold.
To hold.
Go ahead, Jared. We can do a roll call vote. Go ahead, Jared.
On the motion to hold, Mr. Bukowski.
Mr. Bonnerati. Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio. Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 12 knows one. Motion to hold passes.
12927-24.
That's the communication summarizing approved executive actions for December 2022.
Is there a motion?
Receive and follow.
The second, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Public comment on general items.
We have three. First up is Colleen Tortorella.
She's not here.
Next up would be Jacob Poole.
Good afternoon. I'm Jacob Poole, from Eastern Europe originally. Previous name, Jolt Levanta Jacob. So yes, if you type into Google, how many first and second generations are in America immigrants, it says about 30%. And that's a big number. That means one out of three people are directly immigrated or children of direct immigrants to America. 30%. It's a big number. So this is how I contribute to that number. I was in a facility in Eastern Europe in the 90s with thousands of children, for many years, without families being taught languages, given names like Jolt Levanta Jacob, with the intent to be transported here for forced labor. And that's how I contribute to the 30%, along with the thousands of children I was with in Eastern Europe, who were with me, being taught languages, given names, and being prepared for transport here, using the Heinz Children Foundation and the Leganier Battle and Home Community, using the pretense of rescue and charity and adoption and orphan and immigrant and refugee. That's how I contribute to that 30%. And that's how I am in Westmoreland County, Allegheny County, along with thousands and thousands of people that were brought here just like me in the last 30, 40 years. They're hidden, working, no voices, zero human contact, being intensely isolated, essentially held captive in forced labor conditions. And I was pushed through Leganier Valley High School with zero human contact, various different jobs, job sites such as Staples and Office Max and PNC Bank and Giant Eagle and University of Pittsburgh sites, Carnegie Mellon sites. And I was held captive the entire time, minimized human contact, blocked emails, blocked phone, being forced to perform forced labor. And I'm here in front of you, and that's my story. Everybody assumes you're in their room, you have a mom and dad, you have a family to go home to, a family to go for Thanksgiving, but that's not true. I make up 30% of Allegheny County and Westmoreland County, who are first and second generation immigrants. I don't have, that's not my story. I was in a child farm in Eastern Europe with thousands of children, being prepared to be brought here, given the name Jolt Levanta Jacob, for forced labor. I was forced to work at PNC Bank, customer-facing job, near Carnegie Mellon, University of Pittsburgh, and European Union citizens were coming to me, and I was forced to tell them, hey, I'm child trafficked here from Eastern Europe, from the European Union. How may I help you? And literally said that for an entire year at PNC Bank. Thank you.
Next.
Last up is Katie Gornatia.
Hello. That's crazy, because I have such a different story to tell. And I've also heard of child trafficking being more rampant than most could believe. But that was such an interesting story that really leads me to put some more belief in it. So thank you for sharing that story of your story. Interestingly, I wanted to come up here and share my good story of living in this region. And I wanted to introduce myself similarly to the former. My name is Katie Gornatia, and I am a lifetime resident of Pittsburgh. I am a mother and a daughter, and I have an art degree from a local university and continue my career in art with visual art, music, under the name Lightning Bear, and motion picture. I even put an informational cooking show onto the local PCTV. I wanted to, I wanted to come here and say thank you for the work that you do as a happy and satisfied resident, and to voice my appreciation and gratitude for the work of you all, and for the work of all who came before you on this council, for the beauty and opportunity in this region. And I also wanted to express my intention for continuing to attend these meetings. I also wanted to share a little bit more about myself, that I additionally co-facilitate a local chapter of a mental and sobriety, I'm sorry, mental health and sobriety recovery program that operates, a local chapter. Yeah, that was all I really wanted to share. And I also, while I have a little bit more time, just this really piqued my, piqued my thoughts, like earlier, what you were sharing, Councilman Walton, about diversity. Skin color can really change within, like, just one or two generations, and it would be really interesting to visualize what all of our ancestors might look like standing behind us here, and just kind of try to envision the diversity that actually does exist in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.